Lake County, Riverside Township, Order Trustees, meeting for March 8, 2016 to order. Jan, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jan? Are you okay?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Just like Jan. Roll call of the board.
Trustee Clark?
Present.
Trustee Artler?
Here.
Trustee Gezman?
Here.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Here.
Supervisor Tusher?
Here.
Let the record know Clerk Fowles in attendance.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of February 9, 2016, board meeting?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing done. Roll call.
Trustee Clark?
I'm abstaining. I won't sit here.
Harvey?
I abstain from the vote because I wasn't present at the meeting.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Do I hear again a motion for approval of February 25, 2016, special budget meeting?
So moved.
Second. Questions, concerns? Hearing done. Roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion passed. Carried.
Communications.
I have two. Just one moment. I don't know where I put them. Okay, I found them. Paul Lindahl thanked us for the beautiful plaque for her service in the Mental Health Board. And the second one was the thank you note for our $400 gift for the Abraham Lincoln Library Foundation.
That's it?
Uh huh.
Okay. Visitors' remarks.
My name is Brian Sipowa and I am the county's township assessor to give you an update on what's been happening with my office. The appeal period with the Cook County assessor's office is edited for Riverside Township. The next appeal period will probably begin in August with the board review, and then even 2016, next year. We are still assisting our residents with exemptions including one of senior freeze. And we're particularly trying to get the word out about the new disabled veterans exemption. So we're working on that still, probably through the end of March. And it's also my intention to start working on a website for my office. I think it will help assist us during these really busy periods when we have the phone and lots of visitors here at the end of time. I think it will help with communication with our residents. So we're going to start looking into creating a website for our office. And I would just like to participate in the new business discussion if you see fit for these salaries for the next term.
A quick question. On the website, are you -- you have a webmaster? I guess I don't know what it's called. Do it, or...
Well, I'm just starting the process to figure out how I will handle it. But I'm thinking there are lots of different ways that you could design it. Then my office will be responsible for making the design.
Will it be linked to our office?
Well...
Can we have a link on the township website to your office?
Yes. Yes. The township website is through Toyota. So I'm getting to work on something with Toyota.
Okay. And then we can link?
Yes. So I think it'll just be a good place where people can get applications and figure out, be able to post outreaches and information like that. This appeal period, we were so busy that I didn't even have time to do an outreach because I was here until most evenings, until 6:00 with appeals, and I just couldn't do an outreach yet. So I think it'll be helpful. And that's all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisors' report.
Wait, we have another visitor.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm Constance Corrie. I live at 275 Page Road. I'm here in my capacity as the chairperson of the Riverside Historical Commission. I don't know if you remember, Mr. Tusher, but I did speak with you on the phone about a proposal that I would like to make to the township board. And that is to document the buildings in Riverside Lawn. And we're aware that many of them are going to be razed, that the county is going to proceed with that plan, from what I understand. And so I think that it's important that right in this time period, actually before the trees really evolved, if we could possibly get the photographs of all the houses in Riverside Lawn. I had spoken with Francis, which told me that it's approximately 45 buildings that we are talking about. I talked with Mary Drawn about what I see as the importance of this. I actually wasn't thinking about this proposal until I had read an editorial in The Landmark. I don't know if any of you have read that one. Where it was Bob Upheal's idea. He said he thought that somebody ought to document those buildings since they are going to be destroyed. And he mentioned the township board and he mentioned the Riverside Historical Commission. Now, the Riverside Historical Commission, we are definitely interested in preserving history. Now, generally speaking, our museum relegates things to Riverside. But Riverside Lawn has been very important at various times in the history of Riverside. For example, recently, we had an accession from Richard Ray of all of the proceedings when Riverside was seriously considering annexing Riverside Lawn in the '70s. Some of you may have been here. You may remember. But the Village Board actually hired Mark Owens and Merrill to study the plan. And at that time, in the '70s, they allotted $10,000, which was a lot more money then than it is now, for that study. As it turned out, even though the study recommended this, SOM recommended that they annex, through all different kinds of processes, they decided not to go forward with the development that it presented. So I mean, that's one instance. And we have digitized those files. Currently, they are on the village public key drop. But we actually are going to get them on a disk so that we can share them on, not necessarily our website, the Historical Commission, but they will be available to the public. Those there. What I would like to see happen with Riverside Lawn, as it is now, would be to make a record of it, a photographic record of it. To that end, I did contact two professional photographers because I actually had no idea what it would cost. I know that that's important in terms of your thinking. Because yes, I am looking for money, but I'm not for funding. But I'm not just looking for funding. I would like this to be a collaborative effort on behalf of the Riverside Township Board and the Riverside Historical Commission. I see us as the commission carrying the weight on it in terms of the coordination, the reports. But I would like, if the board considers this, that there would be a point person on your board that would at least be able to kind of always confer when we deal with this. Now, to this matter, I don't know if any of you know him, but I did contact a local professional photographer. His name is George Langrose. He documented the addition at Riverside Building High School, which we have in our files at the museum. He has a website. He does very nice work. But I asked him to give me a preliminary proposal as to what he thinks it would cost. So what he came up with was a total of about $3,800. It sounded kind of expensive. But on the other hand, he detailed what he has to do in order to take pictures and what his basic fees are. He actually was giving us a break. He was going to do it at $85 per shot, as opposed to some of the other fees that he normally charges. He said he would deliver high-res TIFF files for reproduction and a JPEG files for online usage onto DVDs. So basically, even the board's website, your board's website, could actually have this or you would have it in some kind of file-free cell. And we would have, the commission would also, the history museum in the museum, we would maintain this file. As far as reproduction, but actually, once he's done the disk, then the commission would absorb that cost to get the pictures printed. That would have been part of this fee. Other than that, in terms of costs, there probably would not be any other. I contacted another photographer who's not local, and I have not yet heard from him. But I would probably also have to probably contact him through to see whether this is really a ballpark. Now, you know, there are alternatives.
Ma'am, I don't mean to interrupt you. We usually give visitors about three minutes to do this. So if you can maybe perhaps wrap it up and give us some information, some hard times, at your convenience.
Oh, all right. So basically, that's what I'm proposing. So I would like the board to see if that is anything that they are interested in doing. Now, I know Mr. Tusher said there's a grant process, and I do have a form of the grant. I mean, I can put this in the grant. But I was actually hoping that it would be a more of a collaborative effort rather than just your grant and money funded for it.
And you said that there are 45 houses there?
That's what I've done. Not all of them are raised. But the grant suggested to me that it would be important to photograph all of them because the area is going to change so drastically once the buildings that are razed are gone.
Have you checked with the Riverside Museum? I know they have all the photographs of Riverside.
I have the Riverside Museum.
Oh, okay.
I'm the chair of the commission.
Oh, I thought the other, who was the other lady that works there? She's been at Riverside.
Diane Serpoli.
Diane is in the commission. I'm the chair. Oh, you mean Suzanne LeDahl? She's on.
No. Well, she was about...
Mike Heinrich.
With the Riverside. Yes.
Oh, Mike Heinrich isn't the chair for many years.
Oh, I know. But I saw her over there. I seen her over there. She knows me, and I...
Yeah. But she doesn't work at the museum anymore.
Oh, okay.
Diane is. Diane is in the commission. Diane Serpoli is.
Fran, have you, I haven't heard anything when they're planning to start. Have you?
They're proposing to deliver the appraisal and ownership plans for it. So I think, I don't even think, and that's going to be a three-month process. So I don't think that buildings will come down the earliest at the end of the year.
Okay.
So the earliest at the end of the year. So we wanted these pictures taken before the leaves came out. So, but it also could be taken in the fall.
Then you're getting pretty close.
I mean, our, you know, if we decide to do a grant thing, it'd be in May.
You're right. So...
Yeah.
But there's only...
Would the, you know, would the board consider? I know it's not on the agenda, but we could put it on the agenda for next month.
Right. Have her fill out a copy for grant request.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be done that way. It doesn't have to be done that way. I think you have to put it on your agenda. Right. Oh, definitely.
Right. I mean, you know, we could put it on the agenda to vote whether or not we want to collaborate with Riverside Historical Society.
Yeah. I think, but I personally think $3,800 is a lot of money for this. So I'd like to get some other...
I am going to get some other. If you have any suggestions, I'm the top of the person.
But really, aren't there only really two historically significant houses there?
You know, I don't think it's just a matter of picking out the historical houses there. In Riverside, we don't pick and choose when we photograph. We have a structure file for every building in Riverside. And we have pictures of every building in Riverside in our file, in our structure file. I mean, homeowner can come in and look at that. Now, there is no such thing for Riverside Lawn. But if we are going to document that area, I think we should document all the houses. I think there should all be photographed.
Well, yeah. I'm not saying that they shouldn't all be photographed. I'm just saying, do we need, you know, that $85 per house for houses that are not that significant? Could we get something that was maybe of lesser quality and less money?
Again, that's because I, you know, when I, I mean, there are people who will take photographs. But the question is whether, if we are looking for a file that is going to be a historical file, do we want it to be professional grade or to be not? So, you know, that would be the difference in terms of cost. I personally write this, I mean, I have an architect on the commission. But we originally talked about him taking the photograph. But it's not a work. It wouldn't work under his work schedule because he's full of his employees. This photographer is, that's his business, his business, as well as the other one that I contacted. Now, a ballpark figure was thrown at me by another photographer at $2,500. But he didn't detail all of what he was going to produce. I brought this one in because he detailed it for me.
It's always good to have one detailed.
So if you put me, if you put the proposal on your agenda for April, I'm going to try to have more research done.
But since this was Bob Upheal's idea, can he lend us a photographer from the land?
Well, actually, I have to talk to him.
Okay. All right.
Because I thought, he does have photographers and possibly if they free that, maybe they aren't as expensive.
Right. Yeah.
As like, George Langrose's work is very good.
Okay. All right. You'd also have to figure out with the online stuff and discs and the quality, you know.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, you know, this is not just going out to take a picture.
We know from the professionals, we get really high quality. I would see what he would be able to get. Now, someone, I'm sure, probably the whole...
Can I just make a question? If you have some written information before that meeting, could you provide it to Rich so that he can make...
Oh, she is. She said she was going to...
No, she said she would bring it.
No. She wants me to do it.
Yeah, if you can.
Right. Okay.
So we can look at it.
What's the best meeting? It's the second?
It's February 12, I believe.
And the narrative on the houses, who would do that? You would do that through the museum?
Yeah. There isn't going to be the kind of thing that we do with each house in Riverside. It's not going to be, we're not going to look for who would first own their lives, or that. We want to make a photographic record.
So no...
Or there will be, oh yeah, there will be like a report in terms of the history of the area and significance of Riverside Township.
But each home would just have its address as far as that information on the home itself.
Now, I have, an article that was done on one of the houses in 2008 that was done actually by The Landmark. I wanted that house. You were saying that it's in there too. Well, and then historical buildings.
Okay. Yeah. We can get into that.
We can wrap this up.
Right.
Thank you.
So yeah, get that, any information to me a week before April 12. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Hastings.
Supervisors' report. Central School had a food drive. The kids went out, had a nice, got a lot of food. Hauser is having one the end of this month, I think, too. Okay? Get to the level again. You know, the schools are getting involved in the township rather than just Chicago Food Pantries and stuff like that. That's it. Trustees' reports. Mental Health Board report. It's in your packet?
Uh huh.
Old business. Let's see. Autarian Blackford Judy Verterpinka. Do you have any information on that?
Yeah. I spoke with the man, Ken Cooper, that I've been dealing with. And I need to send him a picture of Judy to do the bust. And so I'm going to pass this. I was wondering if you liked this one?
Yeah. I've seen that one. It's a very good one.
Yes, it's a very good, classy. Like she, because she was a classy lady.
And then he'll, he will start that and then send us proofs.
Out of bronze, black, lettered.
Yes. We need to send him a deposit for half the money.
For half?
So I can send you the address. I can email that to him.
Well, we approved an amount.
Yeah. Yeah. $4,000.
So giving the deposit isn't the problem.
Okay. Well, she needs the address.
Do I hear a... Do I hear a motion to send? You're going to have to give me the information, who to send it to.
Right.
We already approved the amount.
We approved up to $4,000. So we need a, we need a deposit from that money we approved.
I'll second that motion. If we need to do that, I'll say...
Any other questions, concerns?
The amount, we need to get that vote on it, right?
I thought we already voted on it, but it can't hurt.
All right. That's fine. I mean, you can do it without the vote. It's been approved.
Okay. Are we going to take a roll call vote on this?
You don't need to. We have a budget of $4,000 and we're just putting part of it down as a deposit.
Okay. B. Review and adopt tentative budget, township budget ordinance for 2016, 2017. The changes that we made are in red. Do I hear approval?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
As the tentative budget.
Tentative, right. Second.
All in favor of making this the budget?
Tentative.
Tentative budget.
Tentative. In case we could still have to have the meeting in April.
Well, we have to have it open for public.
Right. We'll put this out for public. Yeah.
Do we need roll call on that, or...
Yeah. Why don't we?
Trustee Clerk, you made the motion. Trustee Artler, you second.
I second it. Yes, I agree.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Clerk?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried for tentative.
Okay. Real Riverside Review and Signing a Governmental Agreement. It is here in the packet. It is Real Riverside Resolution for 2016.
I would like to see a change in their agreement on the first page at number two.
Wait a minute. Hold that, Jan. Hold that. Hold that. What would you like changed in?
Well, if you look at paragraph two, it says that they're going to create video recordings of certain public meetings. "The public meetings shall be the 12 monthly meetings, the township's annual public meeting, and the township's hearing in its annual budget and appropriation ordinance." When we had the request from the commission, they made it clear that they were going to also tape our other special programs. And I think that I would specifically like to see that in the agreement.
Okay. Now, where is this, so I can highlight it, or...
Well, number two.
Oh, number two.
Yeah. Where are you looking?
Well, this was what they gave us.
Second each.
What do you, how do you want it to state?
I think it should include, "And special programs sponsored by Riverside Township," based on this, which is what the cable commission gave us. And I would like that one back, but you can make a copy. You see down towards the bottom there?
And other special programs sponsored by Riverside Township?
Right.
Isn't that included in the 1, 2, 3, 4 paragraph down? Whereas the township holds periodic public meetings, which it desires to have recorded on video when shown on local access cable TV. Doesn't that include that?
That's what I would think.
Well, if that's a whereas, the actual agreement is 1, 2, 3, 4. So it's number two that says what they're going to do.
Observe the public meetings.
Specifically.
Well, if it's in here, that means they have to do it, right?
It doesn't, I mean, number two, it doesn't specifically state other...
Special programs.
Special programs. But it does on number three. Wait. Public meet, no. Not really. It just says public meetings.
It doesn't say it anywhere. No, anywhere in here. So, I mean, that's my opinion.
That sounds good to me. I will... Does everybody agree with this?
Yeah. I guess we might as well get to the bottom.
And, you know, this will go back to the village first thing in the morning. I don't know when the village board meets. And we'll have them included.
I believe they meet the first Thursday in March.
No, I would like that.
Okay. But just make, put it back in my mailbox when...
Yeah. I mean, you know.
So in...
So I, you know, so they know exactly what's going on.
So you want it under number two to say special events, or...
No. Just take out the "and" at the second to last line. Put that, leave that comma there and remove the period after ordinance and say, "And special programs sponsored by Riverside Township." That should do it.
Okay.
Say that again in the...
Remove the word "and."
In number two.
At, in the last, second to last line.
Yeah.
After that comma. Remove the period after the word "ordinance" and say, add, "And special programs sponsored by Riverside Township." Because they, and I don't know if this gentleman remembers, but there, it was a big thing that we were going to have all these others possible special programs. And we wanted to be sure.
That's why we rented the more money for...
Yeah. Partially, anyway.
Anything else about this? Adopt resolution authorizing advanced payment of newsletter postage in resolution number two, Riverside Township. Our attorney went through and wrote it.
I make a motion to adopt resolution. I make a motion, we adopt resolution to authorizing the advanced payment of postage expenses.
Second.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee clerk?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kabitski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'm gonna pass this around. If everybody would please sign it. Okay. Under new business. Um, do I hear a motion to adopt the annual township meeting agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I hear a motion to accept the township newsletter for spring two thousand sixteen?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, I'm not, aye. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. Um, do I hear a motion to accept move for landscaping, uh, contract renewal? Do I hear?
Some move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns?
Yeah, just, uh, um, under the service, they say, include bush pruning and shearing. I assume they check with the village, cause I know Mike is pretty, you know, careful about who touches vegetation here.
You've never had any questions or problems?
Okay, yeah.
Cause they do the library, too, and it's like.
Well, the lawn is one thing, but the tree out there, the trees and the shrubs.
Okay, do I hear a motion for, uh, roll call?
Make a motion, we roll call.
Trustee clerk?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kabitski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried to renew law for landscaping contract at the cost of thirteen thousand, oh, one thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars.
That's, that's you. I can't believe.
Do we need to?
Put it in your emergency desk.
I just initiated it.
Hmm?
Just initiated it.
Yeah. Great job. Okay, going on to number D. Riverside Township Lions Club placemat. It is in the packet. The cost, I believe, is still the same.
Twenty-five dollars.
No, one hundred twenty-five.
Oh, one hundred twenty-five.
Because we have four slots, basically, here. Look, flip the page over, Mary Robb.
Okay. Okay.
Was it a hundred or a hundred twenty-five?
Hundred twenty-five.
Let's see that one here. I'm gonna wait on the full page.
And I make a motion that we, uh, buy the placemat for a hundred and twenty-five dollars for Riverside Township Lions Club.
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee clerk?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kabitski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, Riverside Parks and Rec. It's the, uh, Fourth of July. Do we wanna be in the Fourth of July parade?
I wanna be in the Independence Day Parade.
You wanna be what?
In the Independence Day Parade.
Participate, I hear.
Yes, I would say, yes, we would like to participate.
Considering we have all those beans.
Considering we're under the beans.
Okay.
Um. Does, do we need t-shirt, uh, shirts again, or does everybody still have theirs from last year?
I have my shirt.
Yes, no, we don't really need to order any.
Okay.
So we need a motion to, uh, participate? Do we need a motion to participate?
Yes.
I make a motion to participate in the Independence Day Parade.
And I second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, okay, also in the packet, uh, said elected official salaries for next term. You know, it could be done anytime within a hundred and eighty days of the next election. Right? You know, their, stuff had popped up. I think we should postpone this, um, uh, you know, until, uh, for further discussion at a later date.
It doesn't, it doesn't take effect until next year, anyway, correct?
Yeah, twenty seventeen, but we have a hundred and eighty days before that at the latest.
At least.
At the latest.
At least.
Right.
You know, I, I looked at what was attached, and, um, that is what we did before, but I'm not sure that there isn't a better way, and I pulled this resolution off the TOI website. I didn't make enough copies, but there's enough for each table. If you wanna just pass one to Mary Robb and, and John, they can look at it together. It certainly makes what you're doing a lot clearer than this.
Okay.
And then considering the fact that, you know, who knows who's gonna be in these positions next year after the election, you know, I think it'd be good to make it absolutely clear what the salaries are that are being set for the coming term.
But we will know by December. We're running, we're on a polls, right?
Uh, yes.
We'll get the file by December.
We'll get the file.
Well, that doesn't mean you're gonna be elected, well.
No, I understand that, but I mean, that's when we would know.
True. Well, in, in, in any event, I think that this is too vague, what's in here from the past, and I think this could be a lot.
Okay, you know, make it a resolution and.
Yeah, and it.
And basically put down what we're doing, um, just filling in the blanks on this resolution. You're right, ordinated by the Order Trust of the other Riverside Township, and then, um, two seventeen, May fifteen, two seventeen, the money amount, eighteen, the money amount, nineteen, the money amount, twenty, the money.
For each individual.
Twenty-one.
I, I have, I have a question here. Now, everybody's on the ballot at the same time, but I believe the assessor sworn in early, right, in January?
Later, obviously, you know, this, this morning, so, two thousand eight.
Oh, two thousand.
January forty-two, maybe.
All right, well, then, how is that? We have to make sure how that's going to affect us, to make sure that she gets.
Yeah.
You are elected at the same time, the term.
At the same time, correct.
Okay.
But I don't, my, uh, my term ends December thirty-first.
Okay.
In two thousand seventeen.
So, and just, um, you know, I saw your request for a raise in thirty percent, so you wanna go up to thirty-five hundred, thirty-five thousand six hundred?
That's gross.
Yes.
So, I have thirty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-eight cents.
No, that's, that's ballpark.
Yes, if you wanna be specific.
And it, we can discuss this at a different time.
Okay.
We do have time on it.
So we have to approve this a hundred and eighty days?
At least, a hundred and eighty days.
Before the, right.
It's the six months, essentially.
Before.
Okay.
The, uh, twenty seventeen election.
Twenty, okay, so that's April.
Okay.
So take a look at this form, and I, and I think this would, I mean, notwithstanding any amounts.
I can't hear you.
Notwithstanding any amounts that we come up with, I think this works better because it's.
I like it very much, yes. Yes, put it to a resolution format, yeah.
I mean, somebody looking at it is gonna know exactly what you're talking about.
Okay. Uh, Riverside Public Library report is under FYI for us. Any further, uh, visitor's comments? Hearing none. Approval of warrants.
Okay, I have a motion that the board approved and ratified payment of the bills identified on the general warrant, March two thousand sixteen, in the amount of eight thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars, eighteen cents, as presented to the board this eighth day of March two thousand sixteen.
Second to the motion. Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee clerk?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kabitski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried for general warrant.
Next, the motion that the board ratified and approved payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants, utility warrant, March two thousand sixteen, in the amount of one thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars, eighty-seven cents, payroll warrant, March two thousand sixteen, in the amount of seventeen thousand three hundred fifteen dollars, forty-four cents, health warrant, March two thousand sixteen, in the amount of one thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars, thirty-two cents, monthly filings, March two thousand sixteen, in the amount of six thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars, nine cents, grants, March two thousand sixteen, in the amount of three thousand one hundred fifty dollars, petty cash, March two thousand sixteen, in the amount of one hundred sixty dollars, thirty-three cents, general assistance warrant, March two thousand sixteen, in the amount of nine hundred dollars, township radio players warrant, March two thousand sixteen, in the amount of two hundred dollars, food pantry warrant, March two thousand sixteen, in the amount of three hundred thirty-one dollars, twenty cents, all of the above is presented to the board this eighth day of March two thousand sixteen.
Second to the motion.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee clerk?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Kabitski?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, no other, uh, comments from the supervisor. And do I hear a motion for adjournment?